Meeting, staff report by Ms. Freda MacGyver.
Yes, thank you. So I have two items for discussion that came later in, after the agenda was set. I consulted with the Select Board Chair on one of them, which is the more substantive one, and I'll start with the second one. There's a resident in town that's a senior at Co Brown. His name is Keegan Paradise. He is, he's actually the son of Aaron Paradise, our transfer station administrator. As folks are familiar with Co Brown, they're required to complete a senior project. Keegan an avid athlete. His senior project is centered around collecting slightly-used or new sports equipment that can be collected, sanitized, organized, and redistributed to community members in need of that equipment. And so a terrific project that aligns with his interests but also community need, especially in a time of economic uncertainty for many families. So he has actually approached the Select Board. I sent a letter and a draft of the flyer. He'd like to collect some equipment at the transfer station on Saturdays, similar to the, on two Saturdays, similar to the scouts or food pantry otherwise, and then distribute the equipment on the following two Saturdays, or two Saturdays in November. So looking for the Select Board's support for utilization of the facility for that purpose, supporting a resident senior at Co Brown and his senior project.
Okay, firsthand that went up was Select Person Bailey.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I personally have, think it's a fantastic idea because there are a lot of people in need now with this COVID-19, but I am worried about working this project in the rest of the transfer station. I would like to make a recommendation with consideration that the old town hall parking lot just down the street here, we allow him to use that. That would take him out of the traffic or any other means of getting in the way of the operation on there on a Saturday. I think that's a wonderful idea to do it, but I would like to see that old parking lot up there used for it and we wouldn't have the vehicles, the possibility of injury. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Vice Chair was the next person with a hand up. Go ahead, Andy.
Yep, my, my general commentary on it is I know we, we have allowed the use of the transfer station for people collecting donations and means like that. I'm, I'm generally all right with this for the means of collecting, but the idea of redistributing and having people fitting themselves in the parking lot, I, I do not support.
And Dan, Vice, Select Person Air, your hand was up next.
Um, just clarify, he's going to collect stuff from the metal bin down there and redistribute it?
No, it would be, so the purpose of the location of the transfer station is just for exposure. So folks know that it's happening in a place that folks are likely going to be out to on a Saturday anyways. And so the collection would be of things, folks, of sports equipment that folks would want to donate. An old baseball glove, baseball bat, other equipment. So not things that would otherwise be going to the transfer station necessarily. Just a, like I said, some central place that folks know where it is, are going there anyways, and for exposure, so as a, you know, means to get the word out that the program's happening.
Okay, so I have three, uh, two, I'm sorry, two hands up. I'll start with our public safety person, Rick Walker.
I would, I would just say that if the highway department wasn't appropriate spot for you, that certainly we could probably find him a spot at the public safety building where people at least coming out of the transfer station would see it. My fear is the parking lot up where the old town hall is, nobody's going to see it. And I don't think his project would be successful up there.
Okay, and then a hand up by the transfer station lead. Aaron, go ahead.
Hi, so I, I know, believe me, because I've been there firsthand when we've had to do either food drives or Boy Scouts, and I can talk to Mark, but I'm fairly confident that we could shift it over so it's more on the highway side and route traffic that way coming in to either drop-off stuff. The first two days, we'd just be handing out flyers, so he would be fine over by the transfer station gate, hitting traffic, or he can even be out by the sand shed, I mean, the citizen sand shed outside the gate. That way it doesn't hinder traffic. And then if he, you know, with your permission, we could move it more so for the highway department, that side, that that traffic could go outside the highway gate and not utilize the transfer station exit.
So I think the concern I'm hearing from Vice Chair Knapp is not the collection of the goods, but the distribution after the fact and the time taken to size equipment to children. Is there another way that that could take place?
Well, he's going to have everything organized and there is going to be an infinite amount of signage of where it's going to go. We can set up tables again on the highway side or wherever it could be that, you know, it would be clear and concise so people would know where to go. I don't expect people to linger and, you know, honestly, I'm not, I'm hoping it's going to be, you know, successful for him, but I don't see a huge influx of traffic that this is going to hold up every. And I'm confident we can arrange it that, you know, it would be not impactful for the transfer station at all because, believe me, that's not what I want to do.
Okay, and I still see that Vice Chair Knapp's hand is up.
Yes, I just re-raised it. And my recommendation would be for Aaron and our sons, it may be worth linking it to Barrington Connection or something of that means. That way, from a distribution end, you could either have people meet you to get the material back out so it's sized appropriately. The other piece that's a concern is now you're going to have this influx of people in a COVID environment where now you have to either mandate masks, regulate masks, you're going to have people potentially fitting or trying gear on that are in close proximity to each other. It, it just, it creates a whole world of challenges that I think are better handled in an outside environment.
Okay, and I see a hand up by Select Person Sakosha.
Uh, I was going to comment, just because I didn't know how we were doing with not Barrington Connections, but how the town is as our social media goes. Have we made any progress with that? Because I would like to steer away from the Barrington Connections if we can, and I would also like to concur with Andy's statement. As far as the COVID stuff, it does put the town at an extreme liability. If we endorse this and bring this on, some people are, you know, firm believers that it's, you know, that it's, it's very serious. Some people don't care about it. It's a very fine line that we would have to walk. That's all.
Okay, Select Person Air had his hand up.
Um, I'm afraid as well, set precedent. I agree with the, with Co Brown's doing with the game of conservation and stuff. This has a lot of impact on the whole town, so I don't think we're a position to set precedent at this time with anything going on.
Select Person Bailey.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I, I am appreciative of Chief Walker's suggestion, and for that reason, I will pull mine because I didn't give any thought as to cite, cite, people seeing it and knowing when it's far than going home. So I, I appreciate that. So I would suggest taking into consideration Chief Walker's. Thank you.
So in reference, so I, I think I'll share some input now. Using UV light, we could ensure that, or wiping down all the equipment or leaving it outdoors for 72 hours in a cool environment, any of those ways we could ensure that there was no live COVID virus. So my concern about the collection and then redistribution during the time of COVID is, is limited if one of those three methodologies were used to ensure that there was no live virus on the equipment. I think it's a good idea to do a drive-through in, in an area of town where people who are headed to the transfer station could consider the drop-off in the same location. I think that's part of the, the idea of it is cleaning out the garage and at the same time that I'm taking, you know, my recyclables and trash to the transfer station, I pull a little further and I drop off the sports equipment that if you're like me and you have a 24 and a 27-year-old, there are large amounts of it in our garage right now that could go to good use somewhere. But I, I would definitely want to ensure that one of the three methodologies to ensure that there was no COVID present on the equipment took place. And then just providing a list out, I think, to the community and saying who needs what would be a really interesting way to go about the distribution. Another option would be contacting the rec department and finding out who our families are that, that might be in need of equipment, you know, soccer, soccer balls or, or, you know, whatever it is that we have to donate. So I think there's ways, so maybe the best course of action is, Aaron, is it possible to draw up a quick plan for those things that have been brought up as concerns?
We can, and I, we had updated, Keegan had updated the flyer because he does have on there that masks and social distancing is required and then at the bottom that, you know, all the material that was brought in, the sports equipment, would be disinfected before handing out, absolutely. And that's obviously for Co Brown to be in session right now, it is of the utmost importance that we uphold this and Keegan realizes that and he had stressed. And I apologize because he is actually at basketball practice right now, so he was not able to be here and speak on behalf of us. But, you know, it, they have been very vigilant in what they're doing at school and he would like to continue it to be that way so they can all continue to be in person. So he does take this seriously.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, I think a write-up with the details like that. I'm looking through all of my paperwork and if it was included in here, I have not happened upon it.
Tracy, that's something I, I sent out the flyer and the write-up today. That wasn't included as an, as an item on the agenda in the packet. And maybe if I could make a suggestion, one of the things that I think is terrific about this Co Brown program with the senior projects is it's an opportunity for seniors at that school to go through, think something through, be faced with challenges about, you know, how to accomplish something. And so I think it's so terrific. And I think the idea of, of having the Select Board have some more specific details about the distribution plan, I think would be a great task, like, hey, you know, this is something we're open to, but we'd like to see more details about distribution. And as part of the project, as a step to accomplish that project, I mean, I personally think that makes a lot of sense. Would the Select Board be willing to give the go-ahead green light for passing out flyers, notifying that the, that the collection is happening, to start getting the word out? And it, it sounded like the Select Board was more comfortable with the collection at this point than the distribution. So would the board be comfortable with saying, hey, you know, pass out the flyers, start the, start, you know, planning, giving people the dates for the collection, and then come back to the board on October 5th for more distribution plans to finalize something then? Just a thought.
Board members, I, I, go ahead, Select Person Air had his hand up first.
Um, like I said about set precedent, I did caution the board. We don't let anyone doing polling around that area or anything. You have to be outside the fences, have the certain guidelines. How we enforce that? Because I want people to come back because they, they're letting them do walking in, I get up flyers or...
Dan, sorry to interrupt you, but we allow groups to use that pretty regularly. The scouts and the food pantry and, and actually quite a few others.
And 68 Hours, yes, yeah, we do. Go ahead, George, get your hand up second.
Thank you again. Listen, I think that, because of everybody's comments, the way it's been, I think that we should allow the flyers to begin to know. And then after the plan comes back to us, the final plan as to how it's going to work down the transfer station, I think that should, should be, if the board votes for it, say, make that under the control of yourself and Connor, the two of yous get together and say, yea, yea, and then we can go from there. Then it just streamlines this and makes it move much faster. That's if the other board members approve.
Yep, Select Person Sakosha.
Uh, I love what this young gentleman is doing, and it's awesome because I deal with this firsthand. You know, we give kids some football and they can't afford this and that, and, you know, we have to provide. As long as the town isn't liable, waivers, everything is clean, clean, here, you know, I don't see any problem with it on my end.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to allow for the two days of flyer distribution and the collection of the items with an outlined plan for creating a COVID-free grouping of equipment?
I would like to do that, Madam Chair.
And would anyone like to second that? Oh, I see a second, okay. Roll call vote beginning with Select Person Air.
Air, presence.
Bailey, aye.
Sakosha.
Okay, I have three ayes and Tardakoff aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for considering that. The second item, this is something I talked to the chair about before deciding whether or not to bring to the board for this meeting because it was, it came after the agenda was set. I was contacted by the Department of Environmental Services, I'll back up. The chair agreed that this is something the board should start the conversation about. So Thursday I was contacted by the Department of Environmental Services about a complaint that they've received from a resident in town about their neighbor watering their lawn. The neighbors approached, the lawn-watering neighbor saying, you know, hey, we're in a drought. You should consider not watering your lawn. He said, listen, I invested in redoing my lawn and I'd like to continue watering it. And so the information that forwarded to the board from DES explained a process by which the Select Board could restrict lawn-watering during a period of drought for folks using private wells. The RSA is RSA 41:11-D. And so the, the, I received a phone call from another one of the neighbors. This is up off Tollend Road and, you know, sharing the concern of the original neighbor that contacted DES. So I wanted to make sure that the board was aware that this complaint had been made to DES. There's nothing DES can do about it. There is an avenue for the Select Board to take action if they're interested. I will also share that Select Person Air made a suggestion that this go to the Conservation Commission, you know, due to its ties to conservation water use. And so I, that has, it has not gone to the Conservation Commission, but happy to forward it along.
Connor, the government, the governor, Chris Sanunu, put forward drought regulations about fire and usage of cigarettes in any forested area, including our trails and paths in Barrington. Anything put forward about lawns?
Nothing that I've seen.
I mean, I, I understand the investment. We ourselves reseeded part of our lawn this year. However, I also understand that your lawn is not as important as your neighbor's clean water supply. So how does the board feel about this? Do we want to invoke a requirement through DES? Select Person Air, I see your hand up.
Well, you can hold off on this. I visited the conservation. There is a water. Barrington is a vast source of water, believe it or not, for a big watershed. And then the, yes, but the state also have rules that you have to stabilize lawns up by some means and stuff. So if you catch twenty-two, you don't need it. As long as the water looks pretty, but there are some mandates by the state.
Okay. Select Person Sakosha.
I honestly feel like they're all private wells and, you know, it's not like we're on town water here. And I think everybody, if they want to run their well drive, go for it. If they want to keep their lawn up to date. I invested in hydroseeding this year and honestly, I gave up because of my addition, but it was going to get messed up regardless. But I mean, I think, you know, going in and saying, talking to somebody and going, hey, you know, we're going to tell you how you're going to use your water, you know, I think that's kind of not, not necessary. And they should be able to use their water how they want to.
Select Person Knapp.
Um, I actually was going to echo what Mr. Sakosha said. I, I, if somebody wants to run the bejesus out of their well, then that's their decision.
Select Person Bailey, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yes, I do. The, the unique thing about my piece of property is that part of it is the Sahara Desert and then the other half is the bright green. Well, the bright green is just where I had a new septic system put in. I got the grass growing and I'm not watering anymore. I've got it started. It's in the ground. So it's there. And as far as that, I, I agree with what Steve said. If you're going to water it, you pay electricity and you use the water and that's it. I don't think it's a can of worms that this board really wants to get into. Thank you.
Understood. The one suggestion I would make is if you have gutters, place five-gallon buckets below, supervised five-gallon buckets below your gutter spouts that are coming down of your homes. If you can choose to collect your gray water from showering, from your kitchen sink, whatever you may decide, you'll find there's a tremendous amount of perfectly reusable water that we all let go down our drains that can water your gardens and flowers. So I'd make the suggestion that people consider that, but I agree with the whole Select Board that it is not something we, we are going to choose to mandate in the town of Barrington at this time. Moving on.
Yes. I will turn it over to Municipal Office Administrator Cottle for her report, and she'll be over here in a minute to do so.
Sorry, having technical difficulties. Just a couple of things for your review and signature. Our two payroll manifests, one for period ending 9/20/2020 and the other for this past Sunday, 9/27.
Thank you, Tiffany. We appreciate it.
Welcome.
Up next, Old Business.
I think Dan has his hand up. I don't know if that's mute.
Oh, I'm sorry, Select Person Air, I wasn't looking. Go ahead.
You're on mute.
Dan, unmute yourself. Thank you.
Um, consistency of the board, you want me to still bring this up to conservation or let it go?
Let it go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Connor?
Yes, so we were, yeah, we were talking about Old Business. Yep, so as the board requested last meeting, I, I printed and attached the legislative policy recommendations and the legislative policy principles, including a question and answer. So how this process works is the New Hampshire Municipal Association forms committees in each policy area to develop recommendations out of that committee. At the policy conference, each grouping of recommendations is brought forward to the floor for a vote, a ratification, if you will, by the entire body. And if anybody, somebody can, can make a motion to separate one of the principles out of the grouping to handle individually, and the, the policy conference handles the groupings and then the individual, anything that was pulled out specifically. So including this information, I would ask if the Select Board disagrees with any of the recommendations of the policy committees, that please let me know and, and I will share that perspective at the policy conference. And, you know, I don't think that there's, certainly from my review, you know, I'm supportive of the policy recommendations. You know, some of these are, are distant dreams, you know, aren't, certainly aren't things that we're expecting the legislature to do this year or in the near future. But I think it's important to have a stance that there's things that the legislature hasn't done that they're supposed to do, things like the distribution for meals and rooms tax and others. But anyways, I'll turn over to the board for anything that they don't support.
So I, I read through all of what New Hampshire Municipal Association opposes and supports. I'm glad to know that they would support what we just decided regarding groundwater and water resources because we just acted in, in a way that they would have approved of. So I don't have anything that I would ask you to strike. Do any of the board members have anything that you read in that report that you would expect a representative, in this case, TA MacGyver, to, to strike or vote against or not be in support of when he represents the town of Barrington?
I, I also went through and I didn't see anything that shined there to get my attention, so I don't have anything, Madam.
Okay, so seeing as there are no recommendations for policy changes, we will let Connor represent the town of Barrington as in favor of the areas that are both proposed and opposed?
Bailey, aye.
Okay.
Yep.
I don't think we need, do we need a vote on that, Connor?
No, I just wanted to say one last thing. And so for the community that, that maybe hasn't read all of these, the New Hampshire Municipal Association, that some of the things that are most important to the group representing communities is local control, which I think the Barrington Select Board is very appreciative of, having local control and retaining local control. Additionally, the New Hampshire Municipal Association is by and large opposed to providing any financial liabilities, additional financial not liabilities on a town. So that transfer of, you know, balancing the budget in the back municipalities in, in any way, unfunded liability, unfunded mandates, et cetera. So, you know, that's a lot of what these specific policy positions relate to at a big level. Okay, ready to move on when you are?
So moving on to the reverse involuntary lot merger for map 102, Lot 62. Our staff at the town hall have confirmed that in fact these lots were involuntarily merged and the two interested abutters would like us to un-merge them. And then they are going to request a voluntary merge of one of the lots so that it gets divided. Is that correct, Connor?
Correct. One will get one, the other will get two.
All we're voting on is the actual reversal of the involuntary lot merger, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Would anyone like to make that motion?
Comment?
Go ahead, Select Person Bailey.
I have a comment. We have those three lots and neither one of these two people own those lots?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Who owns, who owns the, who owns the three lots?
The town of Barrington.
So we, we merged, we merged those lots for sale?
No, they were involuntarily merged years ago when the town didn't own them.
So we own them now. We're selling them all as one? Or what are we doing here? I mean...
Yep, I understand your question. So this is one of the lots that we approached the abutters to see if they are interested. Even though it's three lots, it's still very small. And so both abutters are interested in the lot and they agreed amongst themselves that they'd like to divide the lot between the two of them, make each one of their lots a little bit bigger. And so the easiest way to do that, so they don't have to go through the surveying of a lot line adjustment, is since they were previously three lots, if the town reverts them back to three lots, transfers two to one of the abutters and one to the other, then it, it doesn't require the same lot line adjustment. Previously, the lots could just be merged. And so that is, this is a lot that the Select Board already voted on to transfer to these two abutters. But in further review of the deeds, this is an option that came available that makes it easier for all parties involved.
And at what, at what cost?
None.
So they're being given the lots?
No, no, no. So they, the, the two abutters are paying the full amount owed. So this is, this is one of the lots, the abutters are paying all of what's owed on these tax-deeded properties to, to transfer and take, get back on the tax rolls.
Gotcha. Vice Chair Knapp, you have your hand up.
I was going to make the motion to un-merge the lot, map 102, Lot 62, as had been merged involuntarily.
Yep, and I would second that. Oh, George, did you have something you wanted to say?
I was just going to second, Madam Chair.
Oh, okay. Roll call vote beginning with Select Person Air, please. Unmute yourself, Dan.
Air, aye.
Thank you.
Map, aye.
Sakosha, aye.
Tardakoff, aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, moving on to the town land sale auctioneer selection, uh, before any discussion on this, uh, TA McGyver, is there a chance that the 10% of the cost of all properties for buyer's premium would exceed, uh, a $10,000?
Is there a chance? I would say that, um, it's pretty close. The, the assessed value, so, um, I would say yes, it's likely that it would exceed $10,000.
So, what this would require is my understanding, not only an approval of this, but a waiver of our RFP process, correct?
Um, I, I mean, I think you could be safe, but the purchasing policy has to do, uh, with the expenditure of town funds, um, and none of the funds paid to the auctioneer would be town funds. The town would receive any, everything that's owed to the town, uh, and the buyer would pay a 10% premium to the auctioneer. So there would be no transfer of funds to the auctioneer from the town. You certainly could be safe by waiving the purchasing policy or, or saying that this meets the intent of the purchasing policy, um, but by my reading, I do not believe it's necessary.
Okay, um, select person Bailey, you have your hand up first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't remove it, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Uh, select person air?
Yeah, to make it transparent, say I bid on a property, I give one dollar. So I can pay 10 cents to the auctioneer, that's how he's getting paid for the service. It's all negotiated. So the town never sees that 10%. So if I bid a hundred thousand dollars on a house, I can pay $10,000, or I bid a hundred and ten, I gotta pay 1100 dollars to the auctioneer. The town never sees that money.
Understood. Would anyone like to make, go ahead, select person Bailey.
Yes, in that case though, the town would still get the tax money that's owed. So we, we still come out, but it's not our money, it's their money they're paying the bills for, so it wouldn't affect us.
Understood. Select person Secosia.
It's a service that's provided that needs to be paid for, nobody's going to do it for free.
Understood. Would, would, I'm going to recuse myself from this, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And would anyone like to second? Okay, roll call vote beginning with select person air.
Excuse me, the motion is to select New Hampshire Tax Deed and Property Auctions as the auction, the auctioneer for the 2020 land sale.
For the 2020 land sale, go ahead.
Thank you.
Hey, are we? I have a question. I will vote on this, but I need to know if I choose to, uh, bid on something, I want for your consent, or, um, you want me to excuse myself, or the board feels comfortable?
I'm choosing to recuse myself.
If you have a financial interest in this, Dan, I think that's, it's best wise to recuse yourself.
You have, you have to understand that Dan can't turn around and say, I haven't, I'm going to bid for a piece of property and there's a chance I will spend over the $800 limit, but it in no way is, hey, any other way. So long as he makes that declaration, he's, he's, he's all done.
Select person, vice chair nap, you have your hand up.
Yes, I was just going to point out that, um, no one ha-, even if you intend to bid on property, you do not need to recuse yourself from the process of, um, going through it. It's been well vetted numerous times. Uh, and my other question on it was, are we saying everything goes through the, um, land sale auctioneer or just like a couple?
It's a great.
So we previously approved the sale to a butter, so the ones that were not previously approved are the ones that would be, um, auctioned through New Hampshire Tax Deed and Property Auctions.
So it's, it's seven, correct, it's seven properties, Andy. So these are the properties that, um, you know, either are the most valuable, um, or have houses on them or are buildable lots, that the lands committee recommended go to auction, not go to a butter's. So overall, the, the, it's seven properties, uh, the amount owed to the town totals about $300,000, um, the assessed value is close to $800,000 among the seven lots.
Right, I just remember us talking about it and there were like three or four originally, we, we talked about sending to an auctioneer and, and the others, we had talked about putting out for sealed bids, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Correct, yeah. So anything that is not going to an abutter, um, this year, um, is going to auction, um, and it's, it's the seven properties that were on the list approved by the board last time, um, I can, uh, send that to you, um, so you have that update. Um, sorry, I didn't, I should have attached it to the report, it would have been easy enough, but, um, but no, so at the last meeting, the select board finalized the list of the properties that would go to auction. Uh, I took that list and contacted auctioneers to make sure that they'd be interested in participating with that volume of properties, um, and worked through references and recommendations, um, of auctioneers, um, with the lands committee and, or with the chair of the lands committee and, um, that's where the recommendation came from.
Okay, was there a motion?
Yes, I made a motion.
Okay, and there was, yep, we had a second. So I've recused myself, Dan, are you recusing yourself or not?
No, although Aaron's very transparent in what happened here tonight.
Okay, so you're voting, you're voting in favor of the auctioneer?
Yes.
Okay, and George, go ahead.
Bailey, I.
Map I.
Seco's I.
Okay, very good, motion carries, thank you. Um, moving on to the town of Barrington services and COVID-19, we've had some new cases, by the way, in town, go ahead. Um, TA McGyver?
Yes, nothing further to report, happy to answer any questions from the board.
Nope, just a reminder, please, to the public, we're going to be moving indoors as the weather gets cold, your three W's, wear a mask, watch your distance, wash your hands, please.
Um, and I will say one update, I know that the community was glad to hear, the board was supportive of, um, trick or treating this year, um, and I'm glad to report that the recreation department has decided that they will hold trunk or treat this year. It'll be a little bit different, um, on October 24th, the rec department will have trunk or treat at the middle school. Typically, it's at the rec facility, this will take place at the middle school, um, and I'm glad to also share that they are encouraging, um, outside community members to submit an application to have a trunk. So anybody that's interested, contact the recreation department, um, you have to provide a proof of insurance, um, on the vehicle that you bring and, um, you can set up a trunk. It'll be a little bit different than years past, there's going to be cohorts of folks going through, um, I, I believe they're going to ask you to sign up for a time block, um, so there's not a lot of crowding there, um, and the event's expected to run from 2:30 to 5:30. Um, so I know that they're putting a lot of work in to make sure that they can continue that community event, um, I'm sure it'll be a huge hit as it is every year, uh, but just a little bit different. So I wanted to make sure I plugged that for them.
Excellent, great. Moving on to new business, the highway, um, actually, do we do a couple of things?
Yes.
Hey, can I move some things around on this, please?
Sure. To your meeting.
I, I think that if, is the board okay with me putting technical advisory committee recommendations first, the review of the fee schedule second, the highway department office addition, and then the SAU last?
I have no objection.
Any other? Select person Secosia, you okay with that movement? Jim?
Nope.
Are you okay with me moving those around?
Yes.
Okay, select person air? And vice chair nap, are you okay with me moving those?
I'm fine with it.
Thank you. I just sometimes think when it's, um, easier to discuss issues, we move through them quickly in, in our meetings, so. Technical advisory committee recommendations, please, TA McGyver.
Yes, and I also see, I think I saw a town planner, Marsha Gassis, is also on the meeting, and so I'll give her a minute to chime in. Big picture, the, you know, state's 10-year plan for road improvements, they pro- provide funding to different regions, um, it flows through the Strafford Regional Planning, or more specifically, the Strafford Metropolitan Planning Organization. Um, there's a technical advisory committee, um, that, um, reviews project applications. Um, typically, these projects come out of master planning in communities, so, uh, I attach the specific project which Barrington, um, was, from Barrington, which was supported by this group, um, it's, uh, uh, pers-, it's consistent with the master plan recommendation of sidewalks and, um, improved pedestrian and bicycle safety at the intersection of nine and 125. Um, you can see the details and the information I've provided. It's really just giving the board an, an update, um, this is still, you know, a, a couple of years out, um, but there, it's likely that there will be a funding match required of the community, typically it's 20% is what I understand, um, and so that could be about $150,000 for the, um, community. So just wanted to make sure we talked about it publicly and at, I'll turn it over to the town planner, um, to add a couple of additional details and certainly take any questions.
Martha? Yes, um, as many of you, just let me make sure, as many of you know, this has been in the master plan, I want to say, over 10 years now, and the planning board, I want to say now, it's been a bit over a year, actually came up with a list of areas of which they, um, wanted to prioritize adding these types of improvement sidewalks, um, and safety measures. And this is, uh, we've submitted it to regional planning, um, in the last year because we came, became very supportive of the idea, given the growth we've had, proximity to the middle school, um, the idea of wanting to have more, um, of a community gathering, um, area around the nine 125 intersection, um, and when we, when we submitted it, I was really excited to find out that, um, this year, we actually ranked second. Um, there was one, um, project, a very large project for the city of Rochester that came out ahead of us, they've already been, um, their, their funding has already been approved, but the, this, this particular project is within the funding the state has allocated for our region. So it's, it's a, it's a real great, uh, great thing for the town, um, to continue on with, uh, what the master plans have anticipated, and the town center plan, it really goes towards the town center and the whole village district, and they, and the increase in, um, residential units we've had in this area in particular.
Excellent. So it's my understanding that, um, a portion of that will need to be voted on and approved 150,000 or so?
Eventually, maybe.
So, once it's approved, it will come before us to provide the 20% match?
Um, correct. I believe though, uh, the 10-year plan, this, this project in particular, could be, is technically scheduled to be out 10 years. There are also other programs, um, that call the, um, transportation and alternatives program, tap grants, that have a shorter, um, turnover time, which we may also, um, qualify for, where the project wouldn't be out 10 years, but maybe closer to five years. On my understanding is this next step, uh, NHDOT is going to start doing some engineering and looking at the, um, application more closely.
Very good, thank you.
Dan has his hand up?
Oh, go ahead, select person air, I was reading.
Um, yes, it's a lot of study, a lot of quote, at some point they got addressed, that is such, you know, but we hear it sooner or later.
Gotcha. Very good. Okay. Um, go ahead, select person Bailey.
Thank you, I have, uh, two questions, and first one is, what would you estimate, uh, the town's 20% would be?
I think our report says 150,000.
150,000, so being 150,000, you would have to put that before the voters, because of the project being over 50,000? Connor?
We've lost TA McGyver, but, um, select person Bailey, you're correct.
Thank you.
So once it was approved, then we would put it before the voters, yes.
And, no, I.
And then if the, then if the town turned it down, then we would be, uh, where? Will, they would, they take the money back?
Out of 610,000 dollars worth of improvements, that's where we.
Oh, okay, that's, that's what I was asking for.
And I just wanted to be, so.
So just so everybody knows, I think it's a good idea to, to have this here, I'm just asking these questions, so if I get asked, I can answer them, thank you.
Yes.
And the, the one thing I did want to add is the, the board sets aside money, uh, there's multiple accounts available for road improvements, uh, infrastructure improvements in town, so, uh, the town's match wouldn't necessarily have to come from a separate appropriation by, by voters. An account like the transportation fee capital reserve, uh, which is contributed to by every vehicle registration that occurs in town, um, an account like that could be used as a funding source, but it would be up to the board to decide where that money would come from and how it would be appropriated. So one option would certainly be town.
Gotcha.
And I think Marsha had her hand up.
So next up would be review of the town fee schedule.
Oh, uh.
I think this is specific.
The town planner had her hand up.
I do have one question. It would be very, um, beneficial to our town's application if there was a letter, um, from the select board showing their support. If any of you, if you folks would be willing to do that, that would be very beneficial.
Do we have consensus?
We're, we're, it was on, that you had to provide anyway, correct?
Yeah. Uh, can I just have a thumbs up for consensus on a letter from the select board?
I would give it.
Okay, very good. So yes, we can put that together in support of the project. Okay. Review of town fee schedules for code enforcement, building permit fees for 2021. Connor?
Yes.
John Hawkins will take it.
Yep, so I'll start, so as you know, we updated, um, the, through the transfer station committee and then to the select board, um, updated the fee schedule at the transfer station, um, they're also working on evaluating the bag fees. Uh, we're also, uh, using this as an opportunity to review the fee schedules across all other, uh, town departments, and so the, um, what we have tonight, and I just have it listed as discussion at the board level, uh, certainly don't expect you to make a decision, um, exactly tonight unless you felt prepared to, um, but what we, we have in your materials is first a review of the Barrington building permit fee, and so that's a separate document, an evaluation by the building inspector. Now, I, if you haven't already, I encourage you to read through that, um, it's a great evaluation on the methodology for setting building fees based on the cost to provide the services, um, but also an evaluation on the fee structure of other communities. And so this is not only a slight increase in the per, um, thousand dollar cost rate of a building project, but it's also a slight change in the flat fees, um, assessed on, um, the different services necessary. And so all the details you should need are in that explanation, um, that's attached to my report and in your printed materials. Additionally, um, the, the kind of generic town fee schedule that covers all the fee categories, uh, was reviewed and really just updated, most of those numbers aren't changes, um, that are, uh, current recommended changes, but just bringing it up to date with what the costs are, uh, for those items, and that includes the building fees, um, as well. So certainly, um, happy to, um, have, uh, John, the building inspector, provide additional details of, from the excellent analysis that he performed, um, or also answer any other questions about the rest of the fee schedule. Um, and if you have more information you'd like before making a decision, let me know, but certainly you're welcome to make a decision tonight if you feel prepared to.
Go ahead, select person Bailey.
Thank you very much. After reviewing this, going down to miscellaneous fees, I see that, uh, we're talking about, uh, double-sided copies and down below, I think those fees should be, uh, two dollars each and, um, and two dollars per page, should be a change, that's my recommendation. And then my other, uh, question has to do with ambulance service, as you know, or don't know, I've used it numerous times and I have no complaints, I'm just talking about the fee structure before, it used to be what, 280 per ride, chief?
That is correct, George.
That's an old, um, that's an old number, that hasn't been for, uh, um, like 15, 20 years, it was never 280 from the time I took it over, so that's really old.
So the, the other part of my question is, what does the insurance company reimburse you? Do they reimburse you the 653 or what do they do, please?
If you agree, the commercial insurers pay that minus the deductibles if the patient still has deductibles, and Medicare has a contracted price, so we, if they, we take the Medicare money, which is considerably lower, and if they have stuff. money which is considerably lower and if they have supplemental insurance that makes up the difference if they don't we only take Medicare.
You've answered all my questions, thank you, I'm satisfied with this right now.
Any, go ahead select person air.
Yeah, I reviewed it and stuff and I think it needs to be updated is up and nothing personal but I don't want to go on the ambulance.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Give you a ride.
Okay, so go ahead vice chair now.
I was just curious, I guess I've never really paid a whole lot of attention to the ambulance fee schedule and everything and the the mileage cost on it was like astounding I almost fell out of my chair so I was hoping that uh-
It's up, we have we simply could keep our fees middle of the road middle to low end you should see some of the fees that are out there.
I thought 725 a mile was like, oh, pretty much offensive.
720, it's 17 isn't it?
That's what I meant, 1725 a mile was offensive.
Again, again we're not, we're in we tend to ride the middle of the fence we don't we try not to be near the top and let people chase us around so there's there's certainly others out there that are considerably higher than that.
I didn't realize we were buying buying a new ambulance with every ride and a and a house for Rick Walker in the Caribbean at those rates.
So I I think with most things with healthcare the reality is that in order to have appropriate healthcare when it's needed especially in an emergent situation you're going to end up paying for it because that's just the fastest growing expenditure in or one of the top two so. I do know that there was a motion to change miscellaneous fees to two dollars so I would ask the the select board if you're going to approve the fee schedule that you approve it with the change second from the bottom miscellaneous fees from one dollar to two dollars per page.
May I please comment on that?
Sure.
So you'll remember last year we bought brought a proposal to the board requesting to change that from one dollar to 50 cents and the reason for that is the right to know law allows you to call charge a cost for copies and the every single lawyer that deals in municipal government in the state says when you set that price you need to call your county ask what they charge for a copy because those are the courts that are going to take an issue with your calculation for a cost for a copy and Stratford County the courts and the registry deeds over there or I shouldn't say the registry deeds but the the courts in the county charges 50 cents for a copy I would I I see no basis to charge two dollars a copy if anything our copy costs have continued to decrease as we've gotten newer equipment with cheaper toner that's more efficient and I I personally would not support two dollars I don't support a dollar but the select board previously did not support reducing it to 50 cents so I didn't think it was necessary to rehash that with this update but I want to be on the record that I would absolutely oppose two dollars.
Go ahead select person Bailey.
Thank you very much, well I just looked at it with the time and materials that our individual workers have to do but with what you're commenting on Connor I will just withdraw that and just have it stay the way it is.
So is there a motion from the select board member to approve the town fee schedules as okay as as reported on this amended 10-5-20-20 form?
Yeah.
And do I have a second?
I see Jim Sikosha's hand up but I don't know if he-
Jim, do you have a comment or are you seconded?
No, no, I had a comment, I'm the black chief of the group, I get it, no.
Go ahead.
Um, honestly, you know with the copies going up to two dollars, you know, we still have to have that equipment, we still have to maintain it if people can't get it via email and print it out themselves I mean I I think that's an ultimate consequence that they would have to deal with you know I know Dan's a farmer and stuff but you know we we've progressed a lot in the last like 10, 15 years as you know email people having their own printers and whatnot and I mean I don't think it's necessarily gouging people but it's just like you know if you go to Dover for a police report and you want to print it out it's 20 bucks so I mean and then with the same that George brought up with the with the labor and somebody's going to be there to print it out to give it to the person I mean it all adds up eventually just saying from a business standpoint.
Thank you.
I think what TA MacGyver is speaking to in this regard is it's not if somebody under right to know wants to sue the town or specifically the select board or the employees of the town the one thing that you don't want to be doing is defending your copy cost is that what I'm understanding Connor?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a hundred other things under right to know that you would have to defend and you would want to have to defend however I think what I'm understanding our town administrator is that he doesn't want to get hauled into court every time somebody requests copies and gets charged the two dollars, am I understanding that Connor?
Yes.
Okay, so I I will entertain a motion to either accept the fee schedule as proposed or entertain a motion to accept the fee schedule with the two dollars I I have to I think George brought forth a motion we were waiting for a second on which was to accept the fee schedule as proposed. Do I have a second? I have a second with select person air, may I have a roll call vote on that motion?
Air aye.
Bailey aye.
Matt aye.
Sikosha.
Article aye.
Thank you, and one thing I'll say about that is it, yes, thank you, as it relates to the budget process as a whole so you'll you'll you saw in John Huckins review of the fees that essentially this will equate to about a 20% overall increase in fees in the building department and one of the in in the updated fees throughout will also contribute to marginal increases throughout the year and so this will be a way in addition to the transfer station fees that we will end up collecting more fees locally which will help offset the the reduction of revenue from the state level and so it's not necessarily the case that the reduction in revenue from the state level will all have to be made up by property taxes or reduced appropriations because updating the fee structure in this way will allow us to collect more revenue locally so I just wanted to to add that as it relates to the entire budget process, thank you.
Very good, moving on to the highway department office edition, I know Mark's on here, am I correct in saying that?
Yes.
Okay, so I have read and I think the rest of the board has read the overview the concerns about safety and having people inside the building in the mezzanine area the concern about not being able to have a place to meet the concern about this being a discussion over the past 10 years so I am going to before we reread the entire document that's already been put in front of us are there select board members that have questions about this office and break room request, go ahead select person air, your questions would be?
First of all, I don't support architect, I think if you design build and stuff is not a major project and I still question the warrant article because it's replacing a page line article that'll be discussed throughout the budget but hey at this time I don't support an architect.
Okay, any, go ahead, select person Sikosha.
I would have to kindly disagree with select person air, architect, engineer, as I'm a contractor myself, people call them designed builds but I call them designed disasters and whether or not you pay that 10 or 15 grand prior to to have it all set up and everybody's ducks are all in line compared to okay well now we got a problem now we're going to figure it out now the town's getting extra to death by the contractors because stuff came up that wasn't in the plan.
Select person now.
Yep, my my general consensus on this is that I think improving the place where they sit and the office area is a is a good decision I don't think building an attached structure off the side of the existing building is a good solution and when I look at a break room I view it as it's a short term place for people to take their break it's not meant to be a hangout place where people are spending more than the 15 minutes or the 30 minutes that they're allotted for break times.
Okay.
One thing I'll add about the break room is that the different than other departments, you know, this is this is an area where we'd love to see improved facilities through the winter maintenance activities so I mean right now they alls they have down there is a microwave it'd be great to have a stove in there that they can heat up meals when they're there and quite honestly the idea through the winter season is that they would be there much more than the 15 minute breaks but that's where when they were you know getting too tired to continue driving that's an area be it'd be awesome to have a cot or two in the side of the room you know have the have sufficient shower facility so I think this is different the needs of that department are different than a traditional break room in that way and the area that they're in now which is a table in amongst the chainsaws and oil isn't isn't meeting that need.
If we're going to talk about our contract our drivers driving on a road and being tired we got a different problem we got to talk about that shouldn't have anything to do with a break room issue.
No, I'm saying they break now, no, I'm saying they break now but having good area having a comfortable area for them to break opposed to what they have now would be an improvement it's not that they're driving tired because they don't have an area to rest but it's having an improved area.
I don't think a clubhouse is the answer though.
Okay, go ahead, select person Sikosha and then select person Bailey and then I want to hear from Mark because I think one of the main issues that I keep reading about in the letter on the outline is the fumes and the air quality, go ahead Jim and then George.
I have to beg your pardon on this, I mean these guys that they work on trucks they plow the trucks, they're blue collar people you know they don't need the amenities that I mean you know necessarily that somebody like in a firefighter situation who's staying over 24 hours and actually living in the quarters needs I mean a stove and a shower I think that's a little outrageous I mean we're all pretty much local and you know if we can't go home to shower you know we have to look at how we're operating as you know how the the plowing is going for the town being like okay well no need to leave eight hours off or 12 hours off so we can go home eat sleep and then get back to work.
George?
Thank you very much ma'am, I have to tell you I could not support the idea of building on either side of this this structure, I am in favor of taking the office space as described and going down there because I know the first couple of times well first time I went in there I had a difficult time raising the individual that was responsible for the space because I didn't realize I had upstairs when I went upstairs it was horrifying to see how the construction was in that area that needs to be looked at and when I went into the break room the break room had a table that would set six and eight if you put two on either end there was television a large flat screen and there was other things in there so it doesn't to me it served more than a break room was the other equipment there the other equipment was on one side you had the lockers on the other there there is some validity to change that around but I I agree with the same thing most of our employees live here in town they can go home they can have their own shower have something to eat they can renew the relationship with their family by saying aye and outing and then they can get a rest and then come back and do the follow-up, I've watched last year Mark's changes that he's made and I must tell you they're very very well thought out and I think that this here needs a little bit of change when it comes to the break room and if and if they're going to have that exhaust there they will put in an exhaust system a fan that will take the exhaust out they shouldn't be running the equipment all that time inside the building anyway, so that's my say on that, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to hear from Mark please, he did an excellent write-up and I wanted to begin with the select people because I think it was important to hear what the oppositions may be to this but Mark can you speak to what you've heard and to your letter that you proposed? Mark, are you out there?
Uh, Mark, you're muted, you gotta press star six to unmute yourself.
Can you unmute him Connor?
Unfortunately I can't, I can mute people and that's what I did to Mark early on so I'm I'm sure just getting through the unmute process.
So Mark if you're on here and you can press, is it star six?
Star six, and if it's froze up on you you might have to you know call in rejoin. Oh yeah, so he's leaving, he's gonna call back in, it must have froze up on him and so you know when he's coming back on one thing I'll just say and just to underscore I said at the beginning the intention here is simply just to start the process the ball moving forward not looking on any commitments or or decisions from the from the board but you know we have been stalled out on this for nearly a decade and it's time to be moving the ball forward we want the board's support for the direction that we're headed I believe we need a lot more information before we can make any decisions or commitments to large sums of money you know I understand Dan's idea about design build but I'd rather collect the information evaluate the options prior to you know committing to a hundred thousand dollars say you know like you were saying Dan so spending a couple of thousand dollars to have an architect evaluate the options that exist to us with the existing facilities was kind of just an initial idea you know we're not married to it but would be interested in the select board's opinion on a direction if we can you know come to an agreement on what the need is where we're focusing our energy and then the steps we want to take to get there because if if we are going to go to the community to ask for an appropriation for this project I think we need to have I think we owe it to the community to have some specific details whether it's a sketched up plan from an architect or you know more backup certainly more than we have right now so starting the process not looking for any commitments move in the right direction.
Okay, do we have Mark on here?
He left, he hasn't called back in yet.
He called me.
Oh, he called-
He's trying to get back in.
He's he's trying to get back in.
He's calling the other number again.
Uh, he's gonna he's gonna call that number again.
A general comment that I have on that is I this is where Dan always talks about the idea of a like a job trailer, this is where a job trailer would become a reasonably applicable application.
Hey, that'd be actually super cheap too, just saying, anybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Mark, go ahead.
Okay, yeah Connor for whatever reason I couldn't unmute star six wasn't doing it.
Yep, um, yeah, no worries, glad you were able to get on.
Yep, um, so anyway with regard to the offices, like like I've said before, oh, I want to start by saying I apologize for bringing this issue up at a very bad economic time but the dialogue has to be started and talking doesn't cost anything so as I previously stated the COVID caused Erin and I to have to socially distance the only area for me was really out on the mezzanine which has a headroom that's considerably shorter than mine, it's hot, it's dusty, I just received brand new computer equipment that I'm worried about it getting trashed by the dust and you know even though you're not technically you're not supposed to be running stuff vehicles inside all the time just starting them up in the morning when they're cold generates enough smoke and soot to knock over an elephant and it all rises upwards and the the space where I'm at Erin's lucky she's got a window she could put air conditioning in, I don't have that luxury, I have a window but everything's all open around me so it would be all for naught, as select person Bailey said, you know, anybody that comes into that building looking for either one of us is kind of at a loss to where to find us, the stairs are kind of hidden not readily apparent and we've had some people with some some disabilities that actually before we actually saw them the fact that they were in the building- saw them, the fact that they were in the building, they're trying to make it up the stairs, and they were having a hard time getting up the stairs because of their their disability. So it it's kind of a, it it's an awkward setup. Uh, if we try to, if either one of us tries to, uh, if somebody comes in to see us, whether it be an engineer or a contractor uh coming to see me for something, or a resident with a transfer station question coming to see Aaron, uh, if the wrong thing is going on in that shop at any point in time, you literally cannot hear yourself think. And again, the fumes get to be at an unhealthy level. So it's just gotten to the point where that part of it's very, very awkward. Uh, as far as the break room, uh, we don't always have the, uh, very few times do we have the luxury of being able to send people home. Uh, we don't have the luxury of spare drivers because I can barely find enough drivers for what I have. Uh, so these guys, they spend a lot of time there. And, yeah, I can probably, possibly drag all the chemicals out of that room, out to the back shed, put them out there, uh, drag the oil barrels out, the antifreeze barrels, probably put the chainsaws out there, all the other caustic chemicals. I guess I could get them out there. Whether they're gonna take up room out there that's destined for something else, I don't know yet. Um, but uh in its in its current state, that room is is unhelping. And you and you, even if we go through that whole drill of getting the caustics out of the building, uh, you still haven't gotten away from the fumes, uh, and and the noise. So what I don't want to do is have to do a stopgap measure as far as the office is concerned. Because it's gonna, A, it's gonna be way less than perfect. Uh, I I could create a lower-level office in that building uh by moving a few toolboxes out to the back building and basically enclosing one bay of the bottom half of the mezzanine. But I'd have, we'd have to put a window in, you know, we'd have to do a soundproof or as as soundproof as we could get it wall uh in between there and the workspace. You're still gonna hear the noise, you're still gonna get some of the fumes, and customers, residents, clients are still gonna have to walk through the work area to get to to where I am. Uh, I I don't like stopgaps because you you you're spending all that money on what you know from the get-go is a temporary fix. So I know it's a tough, a tough decision to make, and and I don't necessarily want you to make it now, but just think about uh think about what we're dealing with there. It's uh it's not really pleasant.
Sorry, I muted myself. Um, select person Sakosha, and then vice chair NAP.
Uh, thank you, Mark. Um, you do a fantastic job in town. Um, I got a lot of reports on you from your Malago job uh for the COVIDS and stuff, and a lot of people are very happy. Um, but getting back to business, I I think that, I mean, Andy, I think really hit the jackpot here with the whole um job trailer, because that's something that we could do rather sooner than later. And I mean, I think that could provide an office for you, and it can also provide a break room for the guys. And then that way, you wouldn't have to move the uh dangerous liquids up to the back shed and then dis- disarray what you have going on now. And um I'm just making that suggestion because, like you said, it doesn't cost money to talk about it, but um I figured I'd get that in the air and get some chatter on it.
Yep, that's that's why we're here, is to put this stuff up in the air.
Yep.
Tracy, you're muted again. I think you were going to Andy next.
Oh, sorry, Andy, do you have questions, comments? You had your hand up before.
Yep, I I have general comments based on what's been said. Is that if we believe we have an immediately dangerous environment that is impacting people's health, then Connor has a, and us as a board have a responsibility to move him out of that situation immediately. So I would make the recommendation that Mark has moved off the mezzanine and moved into a space within the structure that we currently have that becomes adequate and acceptable. Um, at least in the time being. Um, if we have guys sitting in a break room and we have hazardous chemicals and oils and fuels around where they eat, then we should move them out of their eating space and their break area because, again, we're we're impacting a space that's designated for um eating and um having a meal, not for dealing with oils, chemicals, and and other products. And if we have caustics, we darn well better have an eye wash around because by law we're required to. So, um, those are my immediate comments on it, and, like I said, I think a job trailer could be as efficient means to accomplish what's needed there, and it won't cost us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So is it reasonable to ask for a write-up of solutions other than this approach at this current time?
I think so.
Anyone else, select board members?
Well, I think Andy honestly really brought up, and I mean, we've got to be due diligent, and he did bring up the the immediate dangers and, you know, like you said, we we have oath and uh to the town of Barrington and also to the employees. So I think rather than this thing going, okay, let's let's become, let's make a list, let's do this and that. I mean, I I think this takes immediate action so that way, um, there's nothing that can come back to us as a town as far as liability saying, hey, you know, I I've been in the break room, and now I got COPD, and, you know, or my hearing's gone because I've been eating lunch earlier, and so-and-so's on the impact gun, and, you know, so on and so forth. So I really think that this has turned into a little bit of not just a vote to talk about it, but I think it also requires a vote to take some immediate action.
Connor?
Yes.
Your response, you have your own immediate and unsafe officer for all of the employees. So, um, we've we've uncovered an unsafe situation. We think that the immediate response needed is a trailer placed on site. Your response?
Yeah, I mean, that's something that the board, that was proposed to the board um a year and a half ago. Uh, and I I think it's definitely a viable option. It wasn't supported by the board at the time. Um, and definitely, if uh if you'd like some uh more information, I was just actually looking for the information that the rec department received uh for getting a job trailer over there to start getting a cost impact. Um, but that's absolutely something that we can evaluate. Um, and again, the, you know, the the point here, uh, stepping out of the immediacy for a second, but the point was to make sure that we are considering all of our options. Um, and certainly as far as an addition, you know, just considering the the addition to the two buildings, but if we're if we're gonna consider a freestanding building, uh, you know, a a job trailer permanently installed, can absolutely do that. As far as the, um, you know, meeting the immediate need, I mean, I think absolutely I, um, you know, when when Mark, I, Mark and I first had the conversation maybe two weeks ago, that um um that was, the setup on the mezzanine is related to the computer and everything like that. And no, I completely agree that um immediate change and action is necessary. Fortunately, Mark has been able to mitigate that by not spending a lot of time sitting at his computer and being out in the field. And and one of the reasons that it was more pressing for us is because as we approached winter, that's not gonna be, his environment isn't gonna be um as easy to do that. Um, as far as the um chemicals and the um the break area, um, I completely agree. I mean, we have, um, we made some improvements, getting some uh chemical lockers there, um, at the recommendation of our in-in liability insurance provider. Um, but absolutely, um, you know, improvements would be, um, would absolutely be a a positive uh step uh in the right direction. But, um, I think what you heard from Mark earlier is what we're trying to balance is not spending um short money now, um, that when we're still gonna have to spend long-term money later. Um, and so finding the right balance of, you know, Mark being flexible as a department head, not spending all the time at the office, um, you know, in order to say, hey, let's, you know, save our pennies to make sure that we're doing right by the community long-term. Um, and so certainly, if if um the the select board would like us to take an approach that's different, um, we can. What I'm hearing is the most immediate in piece of information the select board would like um details on is uh some sort of a job trailer. Um, and I'm sure that we can have some preliminary information uh next week at the meeting next week. So, um, I I hope that answers your question.
Yes, our, anyone, uh, George, our authority having jurisdiction here, which is our finance chief, would like to weigh in. Go ahead, Rick.
The thing, the thing that has been today, tonight, been talked about as much as, more importantly, is the carcinogens from the diesel exhaust of the building, and that if you uh, it's important to know that if you uh make the decision to uh provide a space for the road agents, that the administrative assistance needs to be removed from that avenue as well. Um, you talked about going upstairs in the office in the dust conditions, and the vast majority of that is caused by the vehicle starting up twice a day, and then the work gets done in that garage. So uh not having a proper um exhaust system in that building is probably a bigger issue than the uh the oils and the stuff, the antifreeze and stuff that may be in the space. Well, certainly it shouldn't be in where they're eating. Uh, again, I think the bigger issue is the uh carcinogens from the diesel exhaust, and that if uh, you know, if you're moving one, you're moving everybody.
Very good. Thank you. Um, select person Sakosha had his hand up first. No, I'm sorry, George Bailey did. Jo- uh, hold, hold tight for a moment, please, uh, Jim. Go ahead, George.
George, you're muted.
I'm having a hard time with all these flashing yellow hands. Go ahead, George.
Uh, with everything, with everything that's being said is that we've talked about storage equipment, we've talked about exhaust system, we've talked about lock, where lockers will, I'll bring the lockers up to the men to have there. And while we're at it, we investigate the double module. Double modules would come with us if we not only wanted to have a uh restroom facility in it, but it would also be wired for uh electrical use. It would also be uh set up where we have its own heating and air conditioning system on it, and you might be able to find a good price on a used unit for for the double module. All you would have would be the system of hooking it up, sanitary, figure, and everything else, I think, that uh when uh select man NAP came up with that idea of the uh of the module, I think it would work. So if we look at a double module together, you put it together, we'll have spaces for the men on one side, we'll have the administrative aspect of the the department down the other end, and you still have a little area that could be used for uh interviews and or uh uh discussions with Mark on the equipment, and it's surprising, I think. That's my two cents on that, so. But uh, there is uh two or three people in the area. Also, the fact is, we'll use double module, it already come with a uh alarm system in it, because I'm not gonna step on my toes with a chief or with uh John, so, you know, all those things would be there, and the expense would be be minimal. And also, the reason I say that is it could be done, ex, we we could expedite it, and we're on site, quick up.
Select person Sakosha.
Uh, I kind of agree with you, with your saying, George, but I think we're going a little too um extravagant or elegant, however you want to cut it. Um, honestly, we have facilities on site, um, because then, you know, if we if we're looking at a trailer with a bathroom, uh, time, uh, get provisions for that, make sure that we have the proper hookups. Whereas if we just rolled in a trailer and we had to hook up Tampa electrical up to it because we gotta, we gotta go back to what Connor said, saying, hey, our department head didn't want to spend money prior to when there's more money to be spent later at a later date. Um, I think these, I mean, directly if I'm wrong, Mark, I mean, are the bathrooms safe over there?
There's only one. Uh, I mean, it's it's functional, it works. It has a shower, uh, nobody uses it because the the water that, uh, the water that we have there is not something you'd want to drink.
Right.
Or 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 splash on yourself.
Thank you. All right, so we we do have the provisions to to have a restroom that's totally functional for for somebody to go in to to pee and poop and and do do the mandatory things that, you know, if you're allowed, that you're able to do at work. Um, but I don't see the need of going and getting uh an extravagant trailer just for this emergency, like immediate issue. I would say pull one in, have the guy set it up, you know, and I think the town uses Bob Salisbury, he can wire it up temporarily, and, you know, you can have heat there, and then you can get, we're gonna get by until we can get to a greater um solution for this.
Right.
Vice chair, you know, vice vice chair NAP had his hand up next. Andy, can you unmute, please?
Yeah, sorry, I was trying, and I was on the struggle bus here. Um, so, a- as I was, my comment was, you can easily get a trailer that had um a couple of offices and a conference room space, which could very easily be used as a break room, and it can all be done for short money. Um, I used to work out of a time when I worked in construction, so it's a very tangible thing to do, and you can do it for short money.
Select person Eric?
Uh, yes. And too, it won't be a Band-Aid, because Connor and I looked into it for temporary solutions and stuff. He didn't have a good sales, and he didn't talk to my boss, but he got some high numbers, but there is, it can be done cheap money, set up a pad, and he put sewer, because you got plenty of fish for any way to do it. You get a, or for a pump system, and that ain't outrageous. I think we solve all the problems. We'll dig it.
Okay, so I think what we're asking is to have TA MacGyver work with um any resources available to find out what the cost would be for the trailer. I will note that because of COVID, multiple schools in the seacoast area have placed outdoor classrooms, and that what what may have been true a year ago for availability and cost may not be true now. So just consider that when they bring back a figure to you. Go ahead, um, select person Bailey.
Thank you. The only thing I'm gonna have to say is you have a gender issue, and you need to consider that once we start to make this change. So we just can't just throw together a uh, you know, a scoop and poop and go that way there.
What, what are you talking about, George?
He's he's, there should be a second restroom available for males and females. More more and more women are going into um this line of work, which was not traditional work for them, and I think he's saying we need to be mindful of that. Go ahead, select person Sakosha.
You know, and I I do agree with that, but we're talking about an emergency fix that we're we're, you know, in my eyes, I'm looking to see this trailer on site, not permit, not set up a pad like it's on wheels, so, and, you know, and we can rent it and we can lease it. With, there's no, we don't have to buy something right now, okay, because, you know, we don't have to be that committed to it. But, you know, we need to have it on the property, and, you know, as long as we're working towards the ultimate goal to have proper gender bathrooms and the proper office space and the proper break room area, I mean, I I I think everybody kind of sees on how we're going. We're not just going, hey, boom, here here's a fix for right now, and then we'll talk about it in two years when we come back to budget. Um, I just, I I think, you know, we need to act on it. And I think the one bathroom, I mean, how long has it survived? It's survived a long time. Um, granted, we're fortunate that we haven't got any complaints. Um, but if the people of the town do know that our best interest is to get another bathroom there, um, so it can accommodate both genders or three genders or however we're gonna place it, um, you know, that that's how we we should act on it.
Okay. I wa- I want to wrap this up because we have another topic that's gonna take a lot, but Vice Chair NAP, you have one more comment before we move forward with requesting that TA MacGyver get some costs for us? Go ahead.
Yeah, I, two comments related to. Yeah, I, two comments related to it. One, I wanna make sure we stay focused, that we address the immediate hazards first, and we take those items as priority. The trailer is a secondary item, and it is a comment around George's concern on the bathroom. It's not a community bathroom, it is a single stall with a single shower that someone can go in and lock the door. So whether you're male, female, binary, whatever it is, that, the current facilities are absolutely appropriate for that.
Okay. So at this point, we've given a directive to the town administrator. We'll wait to hear back at our next meeting if the possibility exists to get folks that soon, correct?
Great, yes.
Great. Okay, moving on to SAU 74 Custodial Services. So there's been a retirement, um, there is a part-time position available. They've been challenging to hire for TA MacGyver would like to do a contract with the SAU and their full-time staff. The cost is seventeen thousand dollars. With the select board, consider entering an annual custodial service contract with SAU 74, valued at seventeen thousand per custodial services at the public safety building. And hands are going up. So, uh, Vice Chair Nap.
Yep, I'll make a motion to enter into a contract for custodial support for seventeen thousand dollars, because I think it's far cheaper than a sirens someone.
Uh, and I have a second. Is there discussion about this before we move to a roll call vote? Seeing as there's no discussion, beginning with select person Air, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Air present.
Air present. George? Uh, okay, I'm gonna move to select person Sakosha, please, your vote?
Sakosha, aye.
Vice Chair Nap?
Nap, aye.
Hardikop, aye. And I will, we can record George's vote when he returns, but the motion will pass.
And one thing that I'll say, I really appreciate the board's support, and I wanna especially thank the school facility manager, Jim Toll. Uh, he took over last year. Um, he was so willing and interested to evaluate the need. And, um, similar to myself, he approached it not as what's best for the school, what's best for the town, but as what's best for the community. And I really appreciate that aspect of, of his, what he takes to his job at the school. Uh, so thank you to him, and thank you to the board for the support.
So two things, um, George Bailey, you were out of the room. There was a motion and a second to adopt the seventeen thousand dollar custodial services for public safety through the SAU. And it, there was a consensus of three. Are you in favor or not in favor of that?
I, I am in favor. It's my fault I had it muted, which is why you didn't hear it.
Nope, that's okay. And then my, one other question is, as a point of order, because this is seventeen thousand dollars, it is an intratown contract? It's not required, we do an RFP based on our policy, correct?
No.
Very good. Okay, moving on to select person reports, the riveting part of the meeting. Select person Air, report out on your committees, please.
Uh, basically, um, we had, I think, a visual approach, just, well, for some land. He's working, other federal agency, you'll get back in touch with us in consultation. Um, and then, the town is wanting, they haven't met, but they knew their homework, going to your buddies and stuff. I don't know exactly which ones, I know they've been active. Um, so, um, and then I haven't made to a school board meeting.
Okay. Um, select person Bailey, report out, please.
All right, I've reported out. I have, uh, nothing to report, uh, other than that, my meeting is coming up. And, uh, the only other, the only other concern I have is during the, uh, meeting today with the Advisory Budget Committee, it's my opinion, and not necessarily the board's opinion, but we've hired TA MacGyver to be the one to take this. And I think that any questions that they have, they should go by TA MacGyver first, and then he can review them, and if he can give them the answer, he should, instead of going directly to our department. That's, that's how I feel about that. And, uh, I've already voted on the custodial service. So that's, uh, that's something that, uh, the Advisory Budget Committee has to realize is that, uh, their main point of contact is Connor. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Vice Chair Nap, you got a report out for us?
I do not have a report out, because we have not had a planning board meeting, so.
Well, good for you, good for you. Select person Sakosha, do you have a report out for us?
I do. Um, the rec department is still doing Corino on the addition.
You're frozen. Oh, go ahead, repeat that.
So, yeah, I, I'm, I'm warm over here.
Yeah.
Um.
No, you, you froze up on the screen. So we got to Corino, the rec department's dealing with Corino, and then your screen froze. Go ahead.
Yep, yep, they're still dealing with Corino on the addition. And then as we heard earlier, they're gonna be performing a trunk or treat. Um, Sarah Bailey is absolutely killing it, um, with her stepping up in Jess's absence. So, um, all's good over in the rec department.
Very good, thank you. And I participated in the Advisory Budget Committee. Um, there was a request that we add one more external voting member. So, um, I have reached out to a young man in our community with a degree in finance from Boston University, and he's quite bright. I'm hoping that he'll consider joining. If not, we're running out of time, and the board will vote me as a voting member of the ABC. But it was an excellent meeting with a lot of, um, discussion of policy and how to go about making sure we're weighing in utilizing the resources of the Advisory Budget Committee, and the idea of adding them to the agenda each time so that we're hearing on each department's, um, material. I will tell you that the Advisory Budget Committee asked if the select board was in support of the step increases, and would like us sooner rather than later to weigh in on that. Um, my response to that was that I was very aware that the select board would like to know what our reduced revenue stream will be like this year before making any final decisions. So sooner rather than later, as we're wrapping up this year, they would like us to hold a vote on that. Um, but that's the report out that I have. And then I apologize, I did not make the transfer station meeting again. I was presenting to a group of, um, social worker candidates at the University of New Hampshire. So other than that, do we have a need for non-public tonight?
We have one more public comment to hit first, and then we do have a need for continued non-public, yes.
Yes, let me put the timer on. I'm getting very good at using my iPhone for a timer these days. Um, it is time for public comment, and if there is public comment, it is limited to fifteen minutes, three minutes per person. If you're utilizing the Microsoft Meetings app, and you mouse over the front of your screen, your little hand will go up, and I'll know that you would like to speak. Please limit yourself to three minutes. And if you're on the phone and would like to call in and let us know that you would like to speak, you could do so by calling six six four zero one four six and alerting the town administrator. At this time, the first hand that went up was our local fire chief, Rick Walker. Go ahead, Rick.
Could they, uh, quick, a quick update on the three-hundredth anniversary committee? We anticipate, uh, getting the first ornament within the next two to three weeks. We'll be getting, uh, selling those, uh, as part of the fundraising effort for the three-hundred. Um, we're working on, uh, getting a calendar done for, uh, 2021 with, uh, old pictures of Barrington. We're pretty excited about getting that up. There's a fair amount of interest from the local community, uh, to, uh, actually sell these items. I assist us in selling them, and certainly we would, uh, uh, once we get them, we'd like to also be available, able to sell them through the town hall as well. But we're pretty excited about those two things, logos coming along, and, uh, we'll be looking toward some other fundraises for next year and, uh, working toward the big bang in 22.
Tracy, you're muted.
Dan, I think she called on you next.
That is, that is correct. Three minutes, Dan.
My name's Daniel Leia. I reside in Barrington, New Hampshire. And thanks to, uh, the town administrator, he's been keeping me close to the trunk or treat. And remember my brother, Larry Smith, Linda Seavy, my brother's Angie Drucker, who will attend it, and I will donate cash to the rec for our safe candy.
Thanks, Dan.
Great of family members and friends.
Excellent. Um, I also, Rick, your hand is up. Did you need to speak again, because you still had a half a minute? No, very good. Any other public comments?
I don't see any coming through.
Any other hands coming up? Very good, okay. We have a need to enter non-public for purpose of?
Personnel, reputation, and legal.
Personnel, reputation, and legal. Do I have a motion to enter non-public? I have a motion from Sakosha, and I have a second from Vice Chair Nap. All those in favor of entering a non-public meeting at nine oh three PM? Begin roll call vote, select person Air.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Nap, aye.
Sakosha, aye.
Hardikop, aye. I will see you all over in non-public. We will be coming out of non-public with a, um, statement to close the meeting or, um, provide disclosure of what's discussed. I'm not sure what it is yet.
Uh, I don't expect any, um, information to be shared publicly after the meeting, but we will return to the public meeting to close out.
Go ahead, Connor.
I would need a motion to seal the non-public minutes indefinitely to avoid adversely affecting the reputation of those discussed.
I would make that, I would make that motion, and I think I just saw Vice Chair Nap second it, yes?
There we go.
Roll call vote, beginning with select person Air.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
And then Connor, I need to talk.
Sakosha, aye.
Andy, you're muted, you need to vote live.
Does he have the same thing going on with you?
Okay, Andy, can you give us a thumbs up if you voted? Yeah, very good, thank you, and I vote aye.
Um, we have nothing to report publicly from our non-public session, and be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So move, motion to adjourn.
I have a first from select person Bailey. I have a sle- second from select person Sakosha, and I need a roll call vote. Andy, you'll have to give us a thumbs up. Select person Air, roll call vote to exit.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Snap, aye.
Oh, nevermind, okay. And, and Hardikop, aye. Have a good night all, this was a four-hour meeting. Let's not do this again. Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Yeah, Dan.
Can you call me in a free moment?
Um, what, define free moment.